It picks up really well. All right, so we'll call this work session to order September, I'm sorry, October 21st, 2024, 6:35 PM. And this is a, hopefully a wrap-up on the personnel Phase Two policy. So we'll call the meeting to order, and please call roll, Scott.
Sir.
Mayor Peelam?
Present.
Councilmember Angel?
Present.
Councilmember Alders?
Here.
Councilmember Bryan?
Here.
Councilmember Fladabel? Anybody know this? I don't know this. Anybody? Nothing? Okay. Project Manager Genevieve Hirschbach?
Here.
Deputy Clerk Natalie Johnson?
Here.
And your City Administrator, Scott Lehner, is present. Roll call is taken, sir.
Thank you. Will they approve or amend the agenda?
We have an addition to it.
That's the addition to it. There isn't an agenda, agenda, but I just put together something there to discuss tonight, since we want to have discussions with an RCA, and I put a resolution with it on top of the...
I would move that we include the resolution from City Administrator Lehner in regards to the conclusion of the project managers' timeline in the city.
All right, with that amendment, do we have any, anything else? Hearing that, all those in favor of the agenda as amended, sign by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? opposed, motion carries. All right, so Genevieve? Where are we at?
So, if you have the packets in front of you, the first item to discuss, there are comments for just formatting that will be done in the future. So the first item to discuss is on page six of the policy. These are exemptions to the policy. So right now, the Verbiage States volunteers accept, as specifically noted, for paid-on-call firefighters. We had discussed making it more clear that paid-on-call firefighters are exempt from this policy. So I would suggest having it be volunteers as one bullet point, and then a separate bullet point that says paid-on-call firefighters, so that it's very clear they are exempt. There was discussion of reviewing the paid-on-call firefighters' policy to make sure that they are covered within that policy, and therefore do not need to be covered within this policy. So just wanted to clarify, I have not seen a copy of the paid-on-call firefighters' policy, so I wanted to clarify if that's something that should be reviewed either by myself or by somebody else to make sure that they are covered and therefore can be exempt from the overall personnel policy.
Say out of scope, needs to be a follow-up. Say it's out of scope for this document, it needs to be a follow-up.
Later date.
Should I put... Is, is the review of the policy to be done, just not a, not part of this?
Correct.
Okay. Next item. Things that were added based on our last discussion, which was in August. So the next item is on page 13. This was just clarifying the Personnel Committee agreeing on a candidate, and what happens when they are not agreeing. So we can either go through all of the changes that were made based on the August. Otherwise, you guys can review those separately, and if you have any changes to the verbiage, you can let me know whatever is best for the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
So I think I heard Genevieve say page 12, but I had an opportunity to went through this whole document from line item by line item. And if we come across things before we get to page 12, do we want to discuss them when we go? Do we want to highlight them? Because there are certain things that Genevieve isn't here, didn't need the information on, but there are certain things that I caught that I just need clarification from. How would you like to proceed, sir? While we go through this?
I was hoping we'd get through the, since we've already been through these things, that we'd get through the document tonight, and then obviously, we have to figure out what we're going to do if Genevieve's going to be done this week, so. And we can revisit at that time along with the Fire Department policies, I guess, so.
So keep my notes separate tonight, and just go through what Genevieve has, and then we'll double back at a later time to address them?
If we have time tonight, otherwise you have a later time to have.
Okay, all right.
Because we haven't seen what, what notes you have, so.
Yeah, but it would have been the same thing everybody else was looking at when he got the packet, so.
I'm just saying that if we've already been through it, and you want to make changes to something?
Or ask for clarifications, or things that I don't believe that we agreed to, that either are in or are not in the policy. It'll make more sense when we come to some of them, but I can hold, I can hold off if, if you want me to hold off.
Yeah, I think, let's try and get through this, if this is her last meeting, so.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
So would we like to go through the new verbiage that was added for the last council meeting?
On page 13?
Yes.
And that would be the items in pink, or?
Yes. So these are items that were discussed in person, just put down now in writing based on the discussion that we had.
Well, officially now, we don't have a Personnel Committee. We have an Interview Committee. So that verbiage is already obsolete, since we didn't have a Personnel Committee document, as far as responsibilities and authority.
So there will be several items, maybe a dozen places that we'll just need to swap out the verbiage. Personnel Committee does appear throughout the document, so that can be a single change of anywhere that Personnel Committee was, although, what did you, did you say it was an interview?
There's still a Hiring Committee, but...
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Angel?
I guess I, I thought the Hiring Committee was a, we have one, we have two people working now on the Fire Chief. I think we need to look at how we want to hire staff, as far as the interview process, who's involved. Because at this time, we don't have a specific group of people. If it's going to be a, as we...
It should be an ad hoc group each time, right?
Is that, well, that's, I mean, is that the thought? Because we don't have, we took that out, so we just expanded it.
So that whole section, as I understand it, then, that whole selection process section is going to have to be expanded to include an actual hiring procedure process, or would we defer to a different document somewhere else?
That would be mine.
I would suggest updating the verbiage within the document versus having a separate policy, since this entire chapter is on how somebody is hired to the city. So it could, so potentially, it may expand beyond selection process. So I would suggest having two, three, three recruitment and selection process be reviewed, and then double-checking anywhere Personnel Committee is referenced within the policy to make sure Hiring Committee or Interviewing Committee would be applicable. Because I believe there might be one or two spots where it seemed more like a Personnel Committee that references like HR-related things that might not be applicable to an Interview Committee. So those could be updated to the relevant person or persons as needed.
So we'll have to come back to that.
I will flag that, so that it is noted for future review. All right. The next item was a question on background checks. When during the process a background check would be needed or required? And I double-checked with the League of Minnesota City, they have the same verbiage that Now Then's policy has. All finalists will be subject to a background check. But I did notice further in the paragraph, it does say the city reserves the right to conduct either at finalist stage or after a conditional offer has been made. So I think the verbiage is open to allowing Now Then to choose when to do the background check. It doesn't state that it has to be done at a certain stage. So I think it will qualify. It is open enough where Now Then can choose when to do the background check. All right, and then the credit check verbiage was updated per discussion to state that certain positions such as City Administrator and Finance Clerk will have a credit check.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Can we change Finance Clerk to Deputy Clerk, please? We don't have a Finance Clerk unless you're, the title itself. We have a clerk that does Finance, but we don't have a Finance Clerk. And the other question would be, and maybe this isn't for tonight, and you have to tell me, Mr. Mayor, but where are we, where are we doing these credit checks from? Like when mine was done, how, do you remember? Anybody know, or to point us on which direction, or? And if we don't know, I can figure it out, but any?
And any, do you know?
I don't.
A call to another city would be...
Yep, I guess, I just wasn't sure. I didn't want to recreate the wheel if we had a process, and I wasn't aware of it. Thank you.
The next item was the CDL. So we did talk about that quite a bit at the August meeting, but there were takeaways on what requires a CDL, and what, if Now Then can be part of a larger pool for the random checks. So I don't have any new information on the requirements of a one-ton pickup for a CDL, or the larger pool. So I don't know if we have that information, or if that needs to be a...
Mr. Mayor? We do have that information. We do not have to have anybody with a CDL, or vehicles that are driven with a CDL are 26,000-pound gross vehicle weight. That would be your large plow trucks. That would not be any of our smaller trucks, our Chevy or Ford, unless one of those vehicles had a flatbed trailer on the back, and you were pulling a total weight over 26,000 pounds, and it would call for that. The conversation about one-ton pickup trucks, so I got this information from the State Patrol. I had run through Dave, who, Dave, um, dang, I'm sorry. I'll give his name in a minute, but I know what's his name, from the State Patrol, who actually does this and conducted these. Him and I had a lengthy conversation, went, ran through all our scenarios with that. But basically, it's anything 26,000 pounds or over. It does not include our small trucks, unless it's pulling a trailer. You're not heavy enough. When we looked at our trucks, one of our trucks is 14,000 pounds, and our other one's 19,000 pounds. You are not going to get over to 26,000 pounds by putting a blade on the truck and putting a saw through the back. You also do not have to deal with the DOT, as we talked about where you're at. Where the one-ton comes in with the DOT, there are some parameters that go around it. But right here, it says a vehicle that is owned and used solely in the transaction of official business by federal government, state government, or political subdivisions. And I asked him, does political subdivisions mean cities like we are? And he says absolutely. So we are not subject to the DOT or the one-ton. So what, what really it's going to be is just anything over 26,000 pounds. Mainly, high percentage of the time, we're just talking about the large plow trucks.
Good.
Yep, everything else is good.
Excellent.
Okay.
So the second question was the pool?
Yeah, so I did reach out to the county. The county hasn't given me a, a for-sure answer on that. When I talked to Dave about that also, he said he's heard about it, but people have kind of gone away from that. He says if you find somebody that would be open to that, like Anoka County, so I am, still got phone calls in trying to talk to Joe McPherson, gave me a name there at the county that he thought might be able to give me some information, and they haven't been able to provide me any information at that point. If it was, if it was me, a betting man, maybe, I would say we're 50/50 at this point, that we might be able to join that pool. But it's not a dead issue yet, so I'm still working on that piece of it, so.
All right?
Let's start just again.
The next item is on page 15. Again, for our last discussion, verbiage was added that council has the right to supersede the restriction of employees working for the same department. Next item is further down on page 15. Just clarifying the Minnesota Data Practices Act, determining what is private information. Next change is on page 17. We just moved this verbiage from Section 2 to Section 1. And the next is on page 18.
So I have a question on that, so. So is that at the discretion of our City Administrator, but the understanding he knows what hours, he knows the best hours that people should be working?
For the service to the public may require regular shifts.
Yeah.
We didn't change that verbiage at all.
Okay.
So I, I don't know, we just moved it because it seemed more relevant. It didn't seem like it was related to scheduled breaks.
Sorry, Genevieve, can you, I was right, no, is that anywhere we're at? Where are you at?
Yes, on page 17. Service to the public may require regular shifts.
Thank you.
We just moved that out of Section 2, because Section 2 refers to requirements of taking breaks, and this wasn't really relevant to taking breaks. So the discussion was just move it up a section. But we didn't change the verbiage at all. We just, someone had noticed that's more related to work schedule than it is to breaks.
Thank you.
Do we add that it's at the discretion of the City Administrator? Ship designations are at the discretion of the City Administrator?
Is there anybody else that could be?
Isn't that implied, though? I mean, they're the ones...
Is there anybody else that could be?
I was going to say, they're the ones that are responsible and accountable for their hours. So I feel like that's implied.
All right.
The next is further down in that section. We just clarified that no employee may work for another employer or their own business while receiving workers' comp or disability pay from the city. So you can't be on workers' comp from Now Then and then working a different job.
That, is that added, or?
The while receiving workers' comp or disability pay was added. The next is on page 19. There was a question on demotion, on if the city was able to reduce pay. Per the League of Minnesota Cities, salary may be decreased due to performance deficiencies. So the question was, is the city allowed to reduce someone's pay, and per the League, they are. So I don't know if that verbiage would like to be added in this section.
I think we should. I mean, right now, otherwise, it just says frozen. That could be a long time. But if the performance isn't there, but you want to keep them around and try and improve the performance.
It also doesn't designate why they were demoted, if it was a personal reason for going to a different position within the city, or it was a City Administrator decision based on performance. So there's a difference there.
Well, but if they're taking a lower position, whether forced to or voluntarily, they're still stepping down. I, you know, we have such a small staff, it's hard to. But let's say you're supervisor in Public Works, and you decide, I just don't want that responsibility. I want less responsibility. I would still say you, stepping down to a lower position, you get to lower pay. And if, if the City Administrator said, we, we don't want to lose you, but you can't stay where you're at, so you're going to be at a lower position, we think, we think this lower position would work well, but I still think either way, you step to a lower position, voluntary or forced, it should be, may be decreased, is what the verbiage says.
So you could add the salary may be decreased due to performance deficiencies, or a voluntary adoption of...
I don't think it matters. I mean, an employee either demoted, or choosing, an employee moving to a lower job class will have their wage adjusted to the top of the, top of the rate for that, for that salary grade, or however it works. I mean, in some cases, a lot of the salary ranges overlap, and the hourly wage ranges overlap, so it may not matter. But if you're at the top of the supervisor position, we're going to move you to the top of the hourly position. Where, but that's, but if you choose it, if you choose to, like Jeff said, if you don't want to be a supervisor anymore, and you just want to plow snow, it's like, we're going to pay you this, as much as we can in the snowplower rate, but you don't have the same responsibility, so. And like you said, it's a smaller of staff, but I mean, it, it happens routinely, right?
Well, yeah. And, and we're, you know, we're updating this for the idea that we won't always be this small, but...
How about employees moving to a lower job class may have their salaries decreased to the pay schedule for that lower job class?
Yeah, that separates deficiencies versus voluntary.
Yeah. Because there could be several reasons why somebody chooses to, right?
Yep.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
So just for clarification for everybody, we do not have job classes at this time, so I don't know if we should have that in there. And then the second comment that's off to the side says, the salary may be decreased due to performance deficiencies. So for example, I'll just use me for example. If the City Council thinks that I'm deficient in a certain area, or in a performance evaluation, they say, you need to do better in that area. Does that mean then, the City Administrator's pay can be reduced?
So if we're demoting...
We, we just, we just took out the performance deficiencies out of that verbiage. If, if they're stepping to a lower job classification, we don't have, we have job classifications. You've got supervisor, and you've got, you've got Public Works employees. And like I said, it's a small subset here. But let's say supervisor didn't want to do that anymore. And he just wanted, somebody else be the supervisor, and I'll step down and run trucks. That's a lower job class than a supervisor, then that would be, in this case, may be decreased to that classification that, in the group he's moving with. So, so we're not, we're not saying, you know, you can say they're moving back because of deficiencies, or they can say, I choose to do less, and you know, I, I know somebody who was a manager of a, an operation, and they just wanted to run the day-to-day stuff. They don't want to be a manager over multiple operations anymore. So they chose to step back and take a reduction in pay accordingly. So whether you choose for deficiency reasons, or they choose for responsibility reasons, we're just saying if they step back to a lesser responsibility, if you don't want to say lower job class, but lesser responsibilities, the pay would be commensurate with the responsibilities that they're handling.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Angel?
So what if I have a title, and we have more employees than we do now, as we grow, and restructuring of the office takes the title I currently hold away, and splits the responsibilities for, to two other, two other positions that are maybe at a lower class? So I'm going to be, have my wages reduced, or am I going to be frozen until some, a point where I know that the new title that I'm in is at that same level? Because that happened to me at the City of Minneapolis. I, they disbanded the job I had, they split it up. I went to another position that I had previously held that was at a lower rate, but I stayed at the rate that I was at until the rate of my new position was at that rate.
Well, this does say may, so it does allow for those unique situations. It seems like the council could say, because we're splitting this up, we're not going to reduce it. This verbiage is really just, what came out of the last meeting was, do we have the opportunity to say, we can change your pay because your responsibilities have changed? This verbiage will allow the city to have that option, where they previously could never reduce pay due to responsibilities.
And if lower job class is the issue, then we could get rid of the verbiage, lower job class. I mean, you could not necessarily take, you could take a different job in a different department.
New job responsibilities, how about?
Something generic like that.
Next item is on page 20. Deductions from an exempt employee's pay must be approved by the City Administrator, or if there will be a deduction from the City Administrator's pay, the City Council must approve. That's new verbiage that was added per our discussion. The next is on the top of page 22. When the administrator, oh, I should put City to match format, when the City Administrator is requesting leave, it must be communicated to the City Council.
Check.
All right, so that should be all changes based on previous discussion. Now we are getting into new items, because these are sections that we have not covered in previous meetings. So the first item is going to be on the top of page 23. The very first sentence is added per the League of Minnesota Cities verbiage.
All right.
Mayor?
Sir?
Is that something you guys really want to do? Every year, pull a DMV for, in February? Check people's licenses every year?
That wasn't added.
Hmm?
That wasn't added. That's what it's always been.
Well, I don't know if it's ever been implemented, then, because I...
I'm, yeah, there's probably, probably a few things that haven't been implemented, but the only thing added was in the gray highlight. Rest of it is existing.
That's fine, but my question still stands. Is that something you want to do every February?
I, I, I don't see why not, but...
We go down to every two years?
Well, they're, they're driving some pretty big trucks. I, I...
We're not just talking about them, we're talking about everybody that's...
Who drive city vehicles. So, it's, it's going to be...
It's everybody, or who drives personal vehicles for city business.
Okay, so who's, who's driving personal vehicles for city business?
Uh, Natalie, when she goes down to the elections and picks up, Lexi does it, I do it?
You do it at the post office, yeah, everybody, it would be everybody.
Would affect everybody in the office?
No, I mean, I'd, I'd say you limit it to, uh, if they're driving city vehicles. It means that, the risk we're trying to limit is, say, somebody gets a, has a suspended license and doesn't tell their manager, and they're driving a city vehicle and they're involved in a accident or something, and it comes out that the person doesn't even have a license and they've been driving our equipment. I mean, that is the risk we're trying to avoid.
I completely agree, yep.
If somebody has their own vehicle and gets stopped, even if they're on city business picking, it's like, it's not, it's not our, it's not our insurance, it's not our... I, I mean, that's where I would, that's where I would delineate it, but that's just one opinion.
I guess my, a question would be if, if I'm, if I'm a city employee and I'm driving for city business and I have an accident, am I claiming that on my own personal insurance? Am I claiming it on city insurance?
You would, because you're claiming mileage. So, when you claim mileage...
Yeah, claiming mileage would exempt you then from the liability of this...
I think I would want to, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
What's that?
I would like to check with the, or with, um, the insurance company, because I know somebody just the other day whose boss sent them to go get lunch, or said, hey, let so-and-so use your car to go get lunch. They got into a car accident and the boss's insurance is paying for it.
That, that we should have that clarified. Whose responsibility is it if we're using...
And I think we need to talk about seasonal folks, right? We do a background check on all our seasonal folks, but we don't necessarily pull their DMVs. So, if that's something we want to add, then that's something we're going to have to add to our checklist when we bring folks in.
I, I think it's reasonable, because we, we did have somebody plowing for us that maybe didn't have a license at one point. And, uh, we, we weren't checking at that time and, and they got in an accident.
I believe this is covered by the League of Minnesota City. I just didn't flag anything, because the verbiage was already in the policy and it wasn't at that point up for review. Um, so, the League of Minnesota City could be a good resource on what is required or what is expected of other cities. Because I believe the rest of the sentence is verbatim from the league, and that's why we were just adding the gray sentence to match the leagues.
So, the actual item is to check with our insurance company, though. I mean, that's...
Yeah, but I put it on the...
And we'll check with the DMV too and see if there's any charges for this or if there's anything that goes along with that, to run the DMV. I know we used to, you probably run DMV, or, or you do probably run DMV checks on a regular basis to make sure people have up-to-date licenses and all that kind of, we used to do that quite a bit, but, yeah. So, let's just check with them and see what the process will look like. But, uh, knowing that you guys want to go forward and I'm hearing you guys, annual seems reasonable. Yep, okay. Thank you.
I used to do it for the PD.
We used to do it every three years, though. We didn't do it every year. And, but we did have a clause in there that says, if anything changes with your driver's status, you need to immediately notify or could include termination, right? So, better tell your boss if you lost your license, kind of...
And we, and we have that in the next paragraph, if that matters.
So, that does bring us up to the next item, replacing the stricken-out sentence with the league's verbiage. Any concerns with making that change?
Nope.
The next item is right below, for drug tests. So, originally there, several many months ago, there was discussion, um, that the city may want to continue drug and alcohol testing for all employees, not just DOT employees. Um, I know we've talked about it a few times, just briefly. Is the city still interested in doing drug and alcohol testing for all employees?
Well, the way I see it worded, it says, "Any city employee shall be subjected to a drug test, either randomly or due to reasonable suspicion." So, that would mean anybody could, if there's reasonable suspicion.
Correct, but since this policy was originally drafted, the rules for drug and alcohol testing for the state have changed considerably. So, um, if pursuing drug and alcohol testing for non-DOT employees is, um, the city's policy, then there are very strict requirements for what can be tested and when, and what you can do with those results. For example, you may not, um, fire or, um, punish is not the right word. You may not take action against employment, an employee's status, due to the drug and alcohol test results. So, the league states, you're better off going with performance. So, if they were, uh, under the influence and their performance suffered, to pursue the performance issue instead of the drug and alcohol testing, since you may not terminate employment due to a failed drug or alcohol test, but you could terminate employment due to any other reason, actually. You could, um, because of their performance suffered, or the fact that we're an at-will state.
Mr. Mayor?
Scott?
And have you got the laws changed since the last time we talked about it?
No.
No? Because it wasn't the conversation we had prior to this, that you guys wanted to take a look at the, the DOT or the guys running the CDLs, but we talked about not doing it for the rest of employees?
I don't remember.
We had talked about that, um, in the pre-employment testing, um, with the, um, knowing that we would get to this section here. So, now that we're at this section, I know that it seemed, last time we talked about it, that testing for non-DOT, um, was not the preference. So, just want to confirm, now that we're at that section, should drug testing just be for DOT? That's its own separate policy with its own separate rules.
It would be, in my opinion, if the league is recommending, or the state law recommends something different, that I'd have to see that before I could say, yes, leave this this way, or no, go with this other wording. So, I would propose we flag this for future review.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ringo.
Well, also to, who is involved in an accident while at work for the city. So, what's an accident? You know, I remember years back when we had talked about this, um, the insurance company was, you can't do it every time, because if somebody cuts their finger while they're pruning trees, that's an accident. But do you want to do drug testing? Then, the, people will stop, stop reporting things, and we, we don't want that. So, I think we need also, and when we relook at it, after we have the state verbiage is, what is an accident? I mean, it's underneath the motor vehicle piece of it, but it's, it doesn't designate that it's just in a, in a motor vehicle. I mean, it does, it does, later it does say involves the use of a city vehicle or equipment, but what, at, at what point do we start doing a drug test, um, for somebody that cuts his finger or their finger to minutary?
So, our policy was, if it required medical attention. So, if you get a paper cut or you do something, and, but if you severely injure yourself and you have to go off and get stitches, or you get your, you know, broken bone mended, or you're out of work for a while, those are accidents. But if, so if it re, you know, it needs to be defined, but, but if it needs medical attention, I think that would seem to be an accident.
Mr. Mayor, Mary's, I think Mary's probably, uh, from a, um, from a correctness standpoint, like, you, you can't do a drug test if somebody has a bullshit reportable. I mean, that's not, that's not aligned with, like, a, like a corporate, in the corporate world, you can't do that. Now, I don't know if it's, if you're involved in a vehicle accident, if that might be different, but like, somebody gets hurt at work, we can't automatically say, well, you're going to, you need to go to get a drug or alcohol test. It's, because these, Genevieve is right, when you, there's been a lot of updates to the drug and alcohol policy in terms of what you can and can't do over the last couple of years. So, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I'm saying, we don't do that, that doesn't mean you can't, but I'm just saying, a lot of companies don't do a mandatory, I'll say, drug or alcohol screening if they have an ocean reportable. I'm not a hundred percent sure on a vehicle incident if it's different. But we, because our whole policy was, if you had property damage of more than five hundred bucks, or vehicle accident, or an ocean reportable, it was an automatic drug test, and that was all changed.
That needs work. All right, the next, um, change is on the top of page twenty-four. An author has absences from work for a period of three consecutive days may be considered resignation without proper notice. Um, this is just added per the LMC policy. Um, this is mentioned several other places which are flagged as well. Now then's previous policy had two business days, um, the league has three. So, this entire sentence is flagged to be added, but also in future policy, in future sections, updating two to three days.
All right, any question with that? Okay.
The next one is further down on the page, and this is a, um, choice. So, there are two different options for layoff. One has those on a probationary period, um, being the first to be laid off, and the alternative wording is, um, seniority is not the first decision-maker. So, the league's, the league's thought on this is, with the 2025 workforce, having this alternative verbiage is very appealing to the workforce, because they know if the first person that will be laid off at any given job is the first person, the last person that was hired, last in, first out, um, that's discouraging, because they know that they'll be the first person laid off. So, the alternative verbiage says it's based on needs, performance, knowledge, and skills, instead of purely seniority. So, there's two different options, um, but one of them should be chosen just to clarify, um, how the city will review layoffs if needed.
So, the comments from the league there, if we choose the alternative, which I, I agree, in the 2025 workforce, um, you know, shops I've been in before, you could tell when, when things were happening, certain people felt pretty secure, because they were well up the seniority list. Their comment there is, if we choose the alternative, we need to be prepared to implement a system that can be defended in possible lawsuit or legal proceeding. Again, with the size of workforce we have here, it's, it's not going to be a major thing at this point, but as we grow, this will be significant. Do, does the league tell you how to prepare to implement a system?
They do not. They just advise you to be prepared.
So, you better have some logic in what you're doing, and it's, it's not, uh, doesn't look biased in any way. Because I could see that age discrimination will jump in there pretty quick.
Veterans.
Veterans, age, gender.
So, should we stay with what we have until we are able to come to a decision on what that's going to be with the alternative? And what's our plan if we were to go to the alternative?
There isn't one right now, so you could go with the top option for now, um, and then design the, the system, and then switch over to the alternative 2025 workforce, once that's in place.
That would be my preference.
Scott, what do you think on that one?
I think it could go either way, to be honest with you. If I take a look at the second one, I, I think until we have something in place, until we decide, I, I do agree that, with the conversations, that the, uh, we go with the first one, but you could use that second one, you could use a performance evaluation. A good performance evaluation just can distinguish between top candidates and not-top candidates, if you will, right? In, in addition to anything else that the council would like to add to it, you know, if there's a document or something on it. But, but I think you could get there, uh, through a performance evaluation.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I mean, why wouldn't we want to be more flexible, instead of locking ourselves into just seniority? I mean, seniority is secondary, but if there's some other, if we only have one person that can run the motor grader, and he's got five years of experience, and I'm not saying that's the case, but it's like, if you only have one guy that can run the motor grader, and the person with twenty years can't, and you need a motor grader operator, it would seem crazy that we would back ourselves into, we're only going to base ourselves off twenty years. And if everybody's got the same skills and ability and their performance is all good, okay, then we'll go down to the second tier, but it gives Scott some more ability to say, I've got a person that, if I look at my skills matrix, or, um, my cross-training matrix, I've got one person that's cross-trained on everything, and I've got another guy that's cross-trained on half the stuff, why would I choose B over A, just because he's been here for a year longer or two years longer?
I think it also motivates people to get cross-trained, you know?
I, I mean, I would think we'd want to be as flexible as possible. It's like, the way we're currently staffed, I, I mean, it seems like this would be the last conversation we're having, because we've been having the other one for the last two years. But I'm just like, I would think we'd want to keep ourselves open to be as flexible as possible, and I almost guarantee you, the next time we go over this thing, it's going to be a while.
So, I'm hearing, choose the alternative wording, um, and use performance evaluations in, as part of, or as the basis for choosing which employees to stay and which employees to lay off. Plus cross-training.
What's that?
Plus the cross-training, right?
Well, it says in there, um, performance, knowledge, skills, and abilities, so that, that's cross-training, you know, uh, performance matrix, however you want to set it up, but that's in there.
Yep, got you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ringo.
I guess I, I would like, if, to keep us out of a lawsuit, what does the city attorney say? If you're going to do this alternative, you've got the, the three things, four things noted, performance, knowledge, skills, and abilities. But then, is there age discrimination issue? Is there a veterans discrimination issue? Those things should be addressed also, so that, because we, we don't want to get ourselves in trouble by not having that part of whatever we use. If we go with the alternative, that's fine, but we just need to make sure that, when that decision is made, it is made in a way that we're not violating anybody's, uh, rights based on age, or gender, or veteran status. And I don't, I don't know those rules.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Scott?
So, just for clarification, Councilmember Ringo, are you saying, if we get ourselves into a situation like this, to contact the attorney at that point? Are you wanting... To contact the attorney at that point, are you wanting something now from the attorney to address it?
Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, Ray.
I would like something now.
Okay.
Because then we would know that, yeah, so if you're using these four other things, but then how do these other issues, that's age, gender. How does that play into it so that we can, when a decision is made, it's made with all of the information and.
What, what if we put in there, because right now we're not even close to. This, put in there at the time, because we don't know what's going to change in the interim, but have the attorney should be consulted at that time to make sure. We aren't discriminating because there's all manner of, of, of protected classes now which can only likely grow. And so I think it's germane when it comes to that, we say. Say administrator will contact. The, the attorney to verify protected classes, so if you're looking at this, you can say, here's what we're looking at doing and say, well. Here's what you have to be considered of before recommending to the council, because then it's, then it's current to whatever the.
Okay.
Legislation is at the time.
If you find out something now, case law and all these things could change and by the time we actually use it and all the information we have now might not be relevant anymore.
I think we just, we add a clause in there that we will contact the attorney at that point.
The advice of the attorney.
I like it. Good, sounds good.
Yep.
All right, so being with that clause.
So is two point two eight five. Being replaced in its entirety with an alternative wording?
No, just the highlighted paragraph above the sentence that says, or use alternative verbiage, so this sentence here. Will be stricken. I don't have a strikeout right now, that will go away and then just the bottom section. And the next item for retirement, just the next paragraph, there are. Two sentences that the league has that Now Then did not, so just clarifying what the Public Employee Retirement Association. Benefits are and the contributions. So those two are added for the League of Minnesota Cities, the last line. Is not referenced in the League of Minnesota Cities, it does also say that a retiring employee is one that resigns. And meets para-eligibility, but from my research, you don't have to resign from the city in order to reach. Para-re requirements, so my suggestion would be to just remove that last sentence since it may not be accurate.
Okay, okay with the removal?
And okay with adding?
Yep. All right, so page twenty-five, looks like we got a duplicate.
Yes.
And you clarify it on. Attendance.
So this would be where Now Then had attendance of two days of absence versus three. And the league's attendance verbiage is just more specific than what Now Then had, so suggests removing the stricken out language and replacing it with the league's language highlighted. Any questions or concerns? The next section is severe weather conditions, so two sentences added. That city facilities will generally be open during adverse weather. Individuals may determine, evaluate the weather and road conditions before deciding whether to report to work or leave early. And clarifying that public works maintenance employees will generally still be required to report to work regardless of weather conditions.
Questions? All right.
Next changes are per the twenty-two-four state legislature changes to E S S T. They changed. Sorry, we are on page twenty-nine. They changed hourly rate to base rates and they changed seasonal, part-time and seasonal employees from having to have performed eighty hours. To anticipated to work eighty hours, so if you know somebody will be working eighty hours. They don't have to hit the eighty hours before they're subject to E S S T. New changes were made on when you can use E S S T, which is to make arrangements for a funeral. And then they changed. Weather related, so if your pre-assigned work duties are to respond to weather, you cannot use E S S T. If you're a snowplow driver, you can't use E S S T because it's snowed.
That's what I'm saying.
Mr. Mayor.
Scott.
Genevieve, can you go back to page twenty-eight, please, this is a big one that needs to be addressed, please? I said I wasn't going to do it, but I think we need to clear it if you keep going. So the first paragraph underneath the box you got there, that is not what we agreed to. Forty and forty. We have the resolution that was approved that, that was two hundred hours in there. So I think it's key that we get that cleaned up depending upon how long it takes us to get back to this personnel policy, that is, isn't something that is. First of all, we didn't agree to that, that wasn't the verbiage that came out of the meeting, so we need to get that cleared up with the council, so see.
So this, these boxes don't match what we aligned.
No, he's saying the paragraph. The paragraph under it says, at the end of fiscal December thirty-first, employee may roll over, we discussed that, but that's not what we agreed to at the end.
Okay.
And we went back and looked at the resolution just to make sure I wasn't losing my mind and that we didn't, that is where we're allowed to carry over the two hundred P T O, two hundred hours. So that piece will need to. Clean up ASAP if we could, please.
So what should the verbiage be?
Uh, the employee may roll over up to two hundred hours of P T O time.
And then how many were days like this?
I think the exact. The one that, the, the personnel policy that we talked about prior to this one when we were doing that, it said at the end of fiscal year, December thirty-first. Players may roll over up to two hundred hours, twenty-five days, any additional unused hours are lost. That, that, that would replace, that verbiage would replace what is stated in here.
What was the second, how, what was the second sentence right, right then?
Mr. Mayor.
Scott.
Councilmember Ray, you like that quite, what, what were you?
So you, you read what the first sentence, listen, listen, yeah, the first sentence ends at the two hundred dollars, twenty-five days. Then how, how did that affect this, what did we agree on the second sentence?
So the P T O shall not accrue during a period of unpaid leave, that, that one?
No, the second sentence of the.
Of the first paragraph.
Of the first paragraph.
There was no additional, what I read you is the total.
Okay, so.
So. For example, snow, da-da-da-da, administrator may approve additional forty hours, I think that was still in there, uh, we talked about, but the verbiage that actually was. Talked about is what I just read, it was only one sentence in there yet.
All right, so we, the resolution did not have the other two sentences or we just left them as they were?
It was any unadditional used hours were lost, is that, that's.
Okay, all right, okay, so if they're.
Any additional.
So you get two hundred hours, anything over two hundred is, is lost.
Okay.
Yes, that's the, I understand you.
All right.
There was flexibility if we needed to because of snow plowing and all that, that you guys left that as administrators recommending, yeah. But that's not in here, that was just what we talked about, if for some reason you're not able to take the time at the end of the year. Administrator had the flexibility to be able to wiggle all of that and we strictly were talking around snow plowing.
So should we leave that sentence in if there are extenuating circumstances?
Yeah, because, because that would affect elections also, right?
Yeah.
Or Lexi, or, well, Lexi's not there yet, Lexi's got a little ways to go yet.
Yeah, but we don't have, I don't have time to take anything off.
So would it say? If there are extenuating circumstances, for example, snow during previously scheduled P T O, the administrator may approve payout. Of an additional forty hours or payout, are we saying that they can pay out over two hundred hours or?
I'm not looking for payout necessarily, council, you can stop me wherever, but I'm looking at if for some reason we get to the end of December and we're plowing snow like we did two years ago. What we ended up doing was getting that work done as soon as we could, right, getting it back down. Not continuing to add to it because then it gets to be a snowball effect, you can't get that, those P T O down. But to have the flexibility because of this year's elections and what's going on now, or with what the forecast is calling for with snow like two years ago again, to have the flexibility to not. Not force them to be able to take the time, you know, how are you going to do that? And that'll boil into another conversation we need to have about P T O and when they can take P T O, when they can have overtime and all, that's for another day because we already went past it in here. But all we do is create a bigger problem by not having the flexibility, if we're going to tell them they need to take their P T O by the end of the year and we're in snowplow season. And if they take a day off during the week and then they have to go out on Saturday and not pay them overtime to go out on Saturday, that's a whole nother discussion we still need to have at some point. But I think having the flexibility in there for the city administrator with a couple of those exemptions. Snow plowing or, or elections, I think, uh, would be helpful, so.
So do we want to allow rollover of more than two hundred hours?
That's the request, instead of the payout, the request would be allowed to roll over addition with insinuating circumstances. Not the payout, it's not the, not, not that the city has to pay them, but that would be, that's just my opinion, so. Knowing that the goal always is trying to get everybody down to two hundred and we did, we've done a good job with that over the course of time. But having the flexibility, I, I'm really worried about the person to my right here. With the amount of time that's being put in and the elections and everything like that to be able to get down and quite honestly, I'm in the same boat, so. But we'll work at, we'll work the best we can to get to it, but I'm not necessarily saying we should. Pay out, just have some flexibility when it comes to the end of the year to be able to get that down.
So instead of payout there in the bottom sentence, you'd like rollover?
How much are you going to roll over?
I've only gotten to that question.
Ultimately, I think the rollover is to not have any rollover, but if we are into November, December and they're accruing. P T O time and I, I can't. Cut them out because they're, we're plowing snow like we were two years ago, it was tough. But we, uh, we did a pretty good job of it even the two years ago, I'm just asking for the flexibility to be able to. I don't want to send someone home because of P T O hours when I got snow plowing for them to do, you know.
Mr. Mayor.
Genevieve.
I know that previously that if there are extenuating circumstances due to snow, that was because we had a forty-hour cap. If the new cap is two hundred hours. There, that, the planning for that needs to take place many months before it snows the week of, the last week of the year. So, I mean. I think there should be, it should be defined. Extenuating circumstances should be defined in here and it should be capped, like we did have the forty hours, which would make sense if it does snow for one week in December, you would have a week that you had planned. To take off and now you can't take it off, but. You know, there shouldn't be.
Twenty-five days.
Twenty-five days that you couldn't take off in December because there aren't twenty-five workdays in the month of December.
And I feel like two, allowing us to carry over two hundred hours is. I mean, we've done a, we've either not staffed correctly or we've done a poor job of managing it as an individual, because we should encourage our team members to take some days off. It's like if we can't figure out how to take, if we roll into the end of the year and we've got. Five weeks of vacation that we couldn't figure out how to take the first ten months of the year and we couldn't free them up, that. That I. I, like, two hundred hours of, like, if you can't figure out how to, whatever you have over that, you lose it.
So, Mr. Mayor. I would like to address Councilwoman Alders on that, please.
Okay.
So would you like me to take next week off with elections, I'm just saying, we, in this situation with what we've had with staffing, there is no way I could take a week off.
So. I'm just, we don't think we could free up Natalie a day a week. For January, July, November, for her to take a mental health day or do something.
Not in the last year?
So I, I mean, that feels crazy to me.
You haven't been able to take it.
No, I took two days off last week because I was to the max.
So, I, I mean, I feel like we should be encouraging Natalie to take a couple of days off here and there, it's like. Go, is it, why, it take three weeks to go to Jamaica, yeah, that would be great, is that in the cards right now, I, that depends on your needs, I'm just saying that. Allowing us to let people carry over five weeks vacation plus what they're going to get the next year is. My vote is two hundred hours and cap it at that, everybody else can have their opinion as well, but I'm saying cap it at two hundred and we need to tell our team. Figure out how to use it or you're going to lose it. Mr. Mayor.
Hi, Brian.
I think in the context of this meeting that that's going to involve a longer discussion if we're going to revisit that to. Clarify and change it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ray.
And I would hope, hopefully this next year we can get staffed appropriately and it, that won't happen, I mean, Natalie took two days off. I went in and volunteered two days.
Yeah.
Because there was still work that needed to be done and, um, you know, elections, the president, election, presidential is a big election, it's only four years, thank God. But every two years you have elections and there's. Much more work associated with that and longer, the late nights, the, where we have to be open in the evening, we have to be open on Saturdays and Sundays. Yeah, so those are days that, um. And, and I'm surprised at how many people are walking in and vote, I, you know, I, that's never been a thing in Now Then, everybody's wanted to go and vote that day, so. People are taking advantage of it, which then, as you had said earlier with Lexi, it takes her away from her work. So, um, so I would say go with the two hundred, the twenty-five days, flexibility allowed to the administrator and then let's look at that again. Once we are hopefully twenty-five, we are fully staffed and, and we're, we're working well.
That would be great.
And things are getting done. That would be my thought.
And, Mr. Mayor.
Dan.
Just to be case, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, that was me.
Yeah.
Just in case you guys were wondering, we had just over, I think I might have told a couple of you, over a hundred absentee in the envelopes and we had thirty-nine today for direct balloting already. Which was Lexi's entire day.
And I.
So what, what are we doing since we're, I've, I've been getting calls, people want to vote on Wednesdays and Fridays and they can't.
They'll have to go to the county.
So why can't, why can't you take Fridays off?
Because I still have all this stuff that, for deadlines, that's why we took it off. Or we closed it so that we could get some work done because it's the twenty-first and I don't have third quarter done yet. And I still have to do payroll, everything I do has a deadline.
Yeah, like, I mean, we're not going to sell it tonight, if we want to put it as, as, open up the flexibility, I, I mean, I'm. I think we should leave it at two hundred, but if we've got a ton of other stuff cooking right now and we don't have it staffed right and we're going to. and we don't have it staffed right, and we're going to, it's, we can come back to it later.
I think it'll tie into another conversation at that point, too, so.
So what should I put?
TBD.
But we, we previously agreed to the two hundred hours.
So leave it as employees may rollover up to two hundred hours, twenty-five days, any additional unused hours are lost.
No.
No.
Mary said, any additional, or there's some discretionary statement in there.
Yeah, flexibility allowed to.
What should the version be?
I'd go back to the extent, if there are extenuating circumstances, for example, snow removal, I would also put in their elections, because that's a big one. The administrator may approve additional rollover and leave it as the forty hours.
Forty hours?
I'm, I'm sorry, I had said forty, if somebody wants to say something different.
Well, we need to have the two hundred back in there, I think.
Yeah.
Where is it?
It's in a comment to have it be changed.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're over the side, I was reading what you're typing, okay.
Do you want to do rollover or payout? Because the reason that we had done payout was because now people will be starting next year with thirty days already accrued, and then they'll be continuing to accrue. And the discussion previously was that's not feasible to even take that many days off.
I gotta take ten weeks off and all the holidays.
Yeah, you get twelve holidays in there. So then do payout.
Yeah, because that's all liabilities on our books.
And that was a discussion that we had before about not, and about not doing a payout, understanding that it's on our books, and understanding that we're probably one of the cities that lets people carry over the least amount of days. So I just don't think we're going to resolve that, this three sentences tonight.
Because I also know that the PTO is used as an individual's short-term disability, at least that's what was brought up in the past, so.
No, but we, we offer short-term disability now.
But in the past, that was part of the reason why that was there, and people would prefer it because short-term didn't cover. Short-term disability, I don't remember the exact wording of the conversation, but it didn't cover the whole, like, if it was twenty-five days, it's short-term didn't cover an entire month, or it didn't payout at a hundred percent. And I don't remember the exact verbiage, but it was something along that line, so.
There is a blackout period, short-term disability, that you have to cover until it gets ended, yeah.
So there's a whole lot of things wrapped around the discussion of what to do with unused PTO. So if we want to go into that tonight, we can, but I think we're, that's going to be a long conversation.
Nah, just. Let's keep moving.
So.
So leave it at two hundred, and then leave it at city administrators' extenuating circumstances comment, and then I would leave it at, can rollover up to an additional forty hours.
Rollover, not payout?
Just, let's do, we had it at rollover, so let's do an additional forty hours of rollover, and then if we want to come back to it, we'd come back to it. I, I mean, otherwise, we're going to.
Be sitting here all night?
It's seven fifty, we're going to be spinning on this one for the next hour. Dan?
That's what I was saying.
Mary?
Yeah, I do.
Jeff?
Yep.
Scott?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Scott?
Yeah, and just know that, you know, I'll, I'll still do everything we can to get that down to two hundred.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not like it's a free-for-all, right? It's just the flexibility. If we can, the guy, all my staff knows, this is the goal and this is what we're driving towards. This is just something outside of the norm. Just know that I'm still trying to manage that to two hundred.
And I promise I'll take it as soon as I can.
When you roll into the next year, it's just a steeper hill to climb, right?
Yeah, it becomes a bigger problem, no, I totally get it, yeah.
Much over later.
But if we're staffed correctly, it will still be.
A hundred percent, it's.
Yeah, it's going to, if you go, so you go into the year, you got five weeks starting, you get another five weeks in the year. At the end of the year, you still only get five weeks. You can't burn ten weeks, and we can't manage the city.
Right.
Because they have to be closed because everybody's gone, and.
Right.
It will catch us eventually.
Yep.
All right, so now we're on page twenty-nine.
Yes, changes to E S S T, there are no options, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. These are per the twenty-two state legislature changes.
So you can use it for an employee, you can use it for care of family member, you can use it for family members, includes employees.
All right, so the next one comes on page thirty-one. So previously, it was called injury on duty pay. The league calls it job-related injury and illness. Now then, just had to do solely with paying somebody who was injured on duty? The league clarifies what to do if you are injured on duty, how to report it, and then what will, and then just has a summary statement of workers' comp benefits will be applied according to state and federal laws.
All right.
The next one clarifies that if an employee is out on military leave, they receive city compensation in addition to their military pay for those fifteen days. Then it is clarifying, there was verbiage that said vacation leave and sick leave, updating that to be PTO to match Now Then's policy. And then military leave for family members is a new leave type. It is not paid, but it is required.
All right.
Military leave for a family member injured or killed in active duty is another type of leave, ten days unpaid. And civil air patrol is another type of leave as well. Unpaid, but employees may use PTO.
All right.
The next one, for jury duty, just referenced the finance department, and so having that updated to deputy's. The next one is further down the page for court appearances. If an employee needs to testify in court on city-related business, they will be paid. I'm just going to keep going unless I hear otherwise.
Yep.
Victim or witness leave is another type of leave.
All right.
The next change is again the unauthorized leave. Now then, previously had two business day, or two days, and the update would be to three.
Okay, just rereading the new victim or witness leave. It doesn't say anything about paid or unpaid in there. Unless I'm missing it.
It just says time off from work, so I would assume unpaid unless they want to use PTO, but we could add the verbiage from the other types of leave to make it consistent.
I would suggest that, so it's clear.
So there's no question?
Yep. Will that be covered in E S S T?
Yes.
So it is paid.
If they have E S S T, but not all employees do. All right, the next is on page thirty-four. This is optional verbiage. So when somebody is going on leave without pay, normally they must take all of their paid leave first, but there is an option if somebody is going on parental leave, that they may save forty hours of their PTO so that when they come back from parental leave, they do have PTO available to them. So again, it is optional, but it is something nice to offer to employees since parental leave is usually scheduled in advance to not make them use all of their PTO.
Is there a specific wording on parenting or parental leave?
Uh, yes, I think we are getting to parenting leave. I think it is called parenting leave.
So that, that first sentence there, all eligible paid leaves must normally be exhausted before unpaid leave is taken, so that's just if you've got E S S T or PTO, is that what that's?
E S S T, you can't necessarily make them exhaust since E S S T has specific rules. So if what they're, want to take unpaid leave for, you know, they couldn't necessarily take E S S T if they weren't, I mean, E S S T is pretty broad, but if I was taking unpaid leave to, I don't know what I could be doing that wouldn't be covered by E S S T, but. But.
You can't ask.
Yeah, and you can't ask. So what they're, yeah, what they're saying is if you had vacation or other types of leave, you would need to exhaust it all. So the sentence as it was, was all eligible paid leaves must be exhausted before any unpaid leave is taken. That's what Now Then's statement said before. So the change would be, say, to add normally, with the exception of if you're going on parenting leave, you can keep forty hours saved with approval of the city administrator in advance.
So any exceptions to this policy must be approved by the city administrator? So are you saying parenting leave? Or any exception to using up all their leave, paid leave before going to unpaid?
Uh, the way I'm reading it would be any exceptions to retaining some PTO while going on leave. So if you were going on an unpaid leave and it wasn't parenting, but you wanted to save PTO, that would have to be approved by the city administrator.
When would they deny that?
I don't know.
Does it make sense to include the council on that? Again, checks and balances, just saying, yeah. Because otherwise, there's no policy. You don't have a policy.
If it's subject, if it's.
And that sentence in gray was from the league as well, so that sentence doesn't have to be adopted. You could just say, if the leave is parenting, you may retain forty hours when going on unpaid parenting leave.
Yeah, because that's what the exception is for, that sentence is for that.
Yeah.
Exception.
So we could strike.
I would strike the last sentence. Okay.
The next sentence was, I believe, councilmember Brian's suggestion, because the verbiage was a little weird. Holiday leave shall not accrue. So the league's verbiage is if an employee is on leave without pay, they shall not accrue or be paid holidays, E S S T, or PTO. It's just a more succinct way of stating it. This next section is new to Now Then. Employees on leave without pay in excess of thirty days, unless parenting leave, are not guaranteed to return to their original position.
And that's for L M C, so that's legal?
Yes.
And we, we'll find out with this new state leave, when that's coming up, that'll be a whole nother.
That will all probably change all of this.
Okay. What's that?
So it's not a given that they're not going to get their position back because city administrator and council could.
Yep.
Like F M L A.
What's that now?
The third paragraph, employees, that's a new thing added to the league model policy that if they're gone for more than thirty days.
The next section, so the employees may continue on insurance while on unpaid leave, but they are responsible for the payment. Then section after is just the league clarifying, if you are on unpaid leave, you're not getting a paycheck, therefore you must pay the city to continue on their insurance.
But if we, employee receiving leave without pay and in, in excess of thirty calendar days, well, our pay without leave is a maximum of one month. So that falls into, if they're gone thirty-three days, they just went three days without reporting the worker calling in, so they're fired.
And so that, that is from the league, so the league may allow leave without pay in excess of thirty days.
I'm just saying.
So that may not even.
Do we even need that? Because we're, we're saying our cap is thirty days. And if they don't show up after thirty days, they get three days to show up after thirty days, or they're absent without authorization for three days. They're terminated.
So should we just not add that?
I'd strike it, but.
Yep.
Did this come from statute defining unpaid leave or not?
Uh, it can be researched further. I know that at my previous employer, we were small enough that we didn't qualify for F M L A, so if I took unpaid leave of any amount of time, I was not guaranteed to have my position when I came back. So the statute could be reviewed.
But this isn't F M L A.
Correct.
I understand it's not.
Okay.
Correct, because F M L A says you can take unpaid leave and you're guaranteed your job if you're not covered by that.
But if this came from some league model policy, was the league's model policy based on some statute that was passed regarding leave?
Most likely, but.
That's what I'm trying to get at. Because if state statute is saying they can have more than thirty days, but we're saying no, is, is there a conflict? Can we override that without getting in trouble?
Gotcha. I will flag it for, for the review.
I think you're wrong. I can strike it. Because what you're trying to avoid is somebody that's just on the payroll for the break in health benefits, that never shows up to work.
So why don't we strike it, and then if we have to put it back, because the statute, we do it that way, strike it.
Okay. I want it just to act like it is.
Um, so if an employee is on unpaid leave but wants to continue their insurance, they will need to pay the city by the first day of each month to make sure that the insurance coverage continues.
So if they go on unpaid leave for thirty days, they have to pay their insurance during that unpaid leave?
Yes, them having to pay the insurance was already part of the policy. Um, the league just clarifies how that works, since you can't deduct it from their pay, this, the employee needs to pay the city.
Yeah, that's confusing, if payment's more than thirty days late, and you're only allowed thirty days anyway.
So...
The coverage may be terminated for the remainder of the leave, well, we only give them thirty days, so...
That could be removed as well and just leave it that... I'd, if...
I think it's, you might have to review it though, because if they, they go on leave fifteenth of the month, they go over, do you guys get paid weekly or monthly, every other week, or?
Every other week.
Every other week?
Mm-hmm.
So you would miss two, two pay periods?
Mm-hmm.
And then if they come back in and then they don't ever send a check in, they'll start picking it up and covering when they start getting paid again, but it's going to be more than thirty days late.
Mr. Mayor?
Right?
Yeah, I, just looking at the line, if payment is more than thirty days late, the health and other coverage may be terminated for the remainder of the leave.
Yeah, this is written for a long...
Extended.
Yeah, I'm just saying, like, when they come back, if they didn't make the payment during their leave, Natalie is going to have to be on them to make the payment, so that it's not more, if, unless they get in. You know, maybe ours is different, but that's the...
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Natalie.
We currently collect from the employees and then we pay, so when we pay the bill, we're paying for the next month. So realistically, they would have already paid for the thirty days that they're out, and if they paid on the first for the following month, then they would have enough paid, or we would...
The difference here is it's a hundred percent, you're, you're collecting a portion.
But it's already paid for it, because we pay a month ahead. We collect from them before, but yes, I understand that we could do it, but it's already paid for at the partial. So we could collect a difference out of their checks, if that what you want.
Yeah.
So add verbiage, the city may reduce, may deduct healthcare costs?
Do we care, I mean, it's like, if they're going to go on leave, here's what you're going to owe. I mean, 'cause they may not want their, they may not want, they may not want their paycheck deducted. I, I don't know.
So just remove it and have it figured out?
It's going to be an administrative issue for you if you have someone, can't be gone that day.
I can't. Okay, so I will remove it, it does, it does state that the employee is responsible for paying it?
Yeah.
And then...
I'd leave it at that.
How it's paid to be...
Yeah, it's, I'm trying to picture what this looks like anyway, you got, you got fifty days of vacation and twelve holidays and you're taking unpaid leave. It's a serious situation already.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, the only time I think in a mo, the only time I can see this is if you're a new employee, where we had it is new employee, you only get two weeks, and you're getting married on a island vacation, and you're going to be gone ten days, so you have literally nothing left. I mean, that's where, we've seen it in the office and on our hourly team, people blow through it, because you can take it, on ours, you can take it a day at a time or two days at a time.
And Mr. Mayor?
Natalie.
It would go in effect too with pregnancy? You know, that's a huge one, because if they have trouble, I mean, not that we have a lot of staff that could, but later down the road we might, when we hire some more administrative assistance, um...
If they want an extra month.
If they want extra time.
Absolutely.
And I think, um, that leave currently is at twelve weeks with the F M L A, and if the baby's only three months, they might say, you know, can I have another thirty days? That would be, be the only situations I can think of, either like a newer one...
Sure, we've seen that too, but, I mean, that's where we've seen it some with relatively low tenure employees that just don't have a lot of days that...
All right, so what did we end up with?
Uh, we are removing the sentence on paying for the coverage. We are leaving what now then already had, premium costs shall be the responsibility of the employee.
Okay.
The next section now then had as voting leave, but the league adds elections and, um, 'cause it covers more than just voting leave. It goes into detail on taking time off from work for voting and as well as serving as an election judge. So there is, um, additional verbiage on an employee serving as an election judge.
So they can get... So an employee could get paid time off to go vote at the county on other than election day?
Mr. Mayor?
Natalie.
Wouldn't another example of that be Lexi or I or Scott going to her own precincts to go pay? Or to go vote? I know we were discussing that we would probably go over one morning before work to go do it, but is that what that's kind of addressing? Because most of them all, they could just do it the day of, and it won't be any big deal. If they live here.
All right, so the, so... City could reduce the wages of an employee serving as an election judge by the amount paid to the election judge. So we could pay them, we don't, don't necessarily have to pay them the full amount, just what they're not...
Correct, if they're getting paid fifty dollars a day to be an election judge, you could pay them the difference. But previously now then's policy said they will be allowed time off without pay to serve as an election judge, but per Minnesota state statute, um, it is paid time away, not unpaid time.
Okay. Paid time away, but we could ask for their election judge pay, kind of like...
Kind of like jury duty.
Any questions on those?
Nope.
All right. The next is on page thirty-five as well. The city may require the employee to be examined by the city's designated physician at the city's expense before returning to work.
Wait a minute, go back.
We got the delegates to party conventions?
Oh, sorry. Delegates to party conventions is new.
So basically you give them time, but it, it's unpaid or they can use...
PTO.
Vacation PTO. Or potentially E S S T.
Correct, I think a lot of, a lot of the unpaid leaves are just job protection, so if somebody ran out of PTO, you couldn't deny them time away from work.
If that convention goes more than thirty days, they have to pay their own.
Yeah.
They better be back at day thirty-three.
I don't want to be at that one.
It's a deadlock convention.
Yeah.
All right. So now the city may require employee to be examined?
Um, so if the city, from my understanding, the city does not have a designated physician, so either one could be chosen or the statement could be removed. There is already a requirement that the employee's physician provides a statement that they are eligible to return to work.
What was that to review?
There is already a statement that the employee's physician needs to provide a statement that they are capable of working, so this would be in addition to their doctor's note, having our doctor clear them for work.
Let me just strike it.
I'd strike it.
Well, trust it, not everybody has a relative that's a doctor ruling their way down. Have returned to work notice.
That they really want to come back to work that badly, they're going to afford it, I think that's probably...
I'm going to hit the other, other side of that coin first.
All right, we are down to page thirty-six. Pregnancy and parenting leave. Um, this is the current unpaid leave of absence for pregnancy and parenting. Again, this will all probably change when Minnesota's paid leave goes into effect, but this specifically for pregnancy and parenting is twelve weeks of unpaid. It mentions it a little bit here, but it will touch on it more later, for the birth or adoption of a child, so there is additional, uh, just clarifying that adoptive parents have the same rights as, uh, birth parents is a separate section, but it's mentioned here.
In case that the child must remain in the hospital longer than the mother, the leave must begin within twelve months after the child leaves the hospital?
Yes, so, um, if, if you give birth, but your child stays in the hospital, you don't have to take the leave right then. So you could choose to take the leave when the child is six months old, but they're just coming home from the hospital that day, you can...
So, so within twelve months, you could trigger that twelve weeks at some point? One second, I got you, okay, okay.
Yeah, you don't have to take it like, um, right after you give birth.
Okay, got you.
So all employees are entitled to, to take the unpaid leave of absence. Female employees for prenatal care, incapacity to pregnancy, childbirth, or related health conditions as well, as biological or adoptive parents, so male or female, you can take twelve weeks?
Where? I'm... I don't read.
Yeah, I read it as two separate sentences that they merged. Female employees for prenatal, pregnancy, childbirth, or health-related conditions, period. Biological or adoptive parents in conjunction with birth or adoption.
Oh, okay.
That's how I read it, and so that's, that's probably why the further twelve months happens as well, because a lot of parents, one parent will take off the first three, and then the second parent will take off the next one, thirty-six.
So that's the second sentence of that paragraph two-nine. Um, employees are required to use accrued leave, i.e. sick vacation, so we just switch that to PTO?
Yes. And you could remove anything related to F M L A? Knowing that that all will be replaced with Minnesota's F M L A? And right now, now then doesn't qualify for F M L A?
So, so in a case like this, you have a, a, the parents, um, you have two parents, and one of them works here and one of them works somewhere else, they can each take twelve weeks?
Yes.
Either concurrently or at different times?
So employees are required to use accrued leave during parental leave, is that period?
Should be period, yeah.
If, I would think there should be a period there, no?
So is that, that, that's not the, I don't think that's the... It's not the law, all right? 'Cause we're not saying, if you're on the, you're taking the twelve weeks unpaid, we're not going to force someone to use all of their sick time during that twelve weeks.
It, it almost contradicted, but...
Go back to page thirty-four, it says if the leave qualifies under parenting leave, the employee may retain a balance of forty hours.
But that one says that they need to use all paid leave before going on unpaid, so that does match up with this, so this is saying you can... Well, this is saying you have to do it at the same time.
Yeah, I, that, that seems like we need to clarification there, 'cause the expectation is if they're, if someone has a child, we're not going to make them burn up all of their vacation during, during this twelve-week period that's supposed to be unpaid. They can use that to extend the twelve weeks, but it shouldn't be... You get twelve weeks, but you've got four weeks vacation, so you're going to have four paid weeks and eight unpaid weeks. That doesn't make sense, it should be the po, someone's having a child, they can, they get twelve weeks unpaid, that's a benefit. And whatever you choose to do with vacation or PTO ahead of that is on you. If you choose to take another thirty days unpaid on top of this twelve weeks, then we may ask you to, then you can retain up to forty hours. But this twelve weeks is, people should not have to burn all their vacation during that twelve weeks.
Unless they choose to use all of it.
Unless they choose to.
Right, we don't require them to do it, right?
So change employees are required to, to employees may use PTO during parenting leave? 'Cause you want to allow them to if they want to.
Yeah.
You can if they want.
Yeah.
Because it is unpaid, and if they need the money...
Yeah, I just, a hundred percent, if they want to, if they want to use their vacation, if they want to get paid out, correct. If they want to, they can, but we shouldn't force them to burn all of their vacation and PTO during that twelve weeks.
While they're in F M L A.
What's that?
While they're in F M L A.
Well, but F M L A is separate from, uh, this parenting leave.
Right.
And what is, what is the city's policy? Is it, do we have any paid time off for pregnancy?
No.
I don't think so.
We haven't had one, and I don't think we ever had one.
They, they can use their two hundred hours of real life.
Yeah.
So I, so I have a question, so back to page thirty-four, regular, regular leave without pay. Should we, because of the parameters of the pregnancy and parenting leave, should we designate, should we say something in here that says, this is not, this, this regular leave without pay? This is, I want to just go out someplace for forty-five days and do nothing, you know? Um, it's not a pregnancy or parenting leave. Should there be some... Should there be something that says, two-nine, twelve? You know, it does not have this two-nine, whatever the number's going to be?
I, I think after looking at the parenting and pregnancy and the discussion of using or not using PTO, I think the, if leave qualifies under parenting leave, they may retain a balance, that whole section should be removed. And two-nine, twelve should be regular leave without pay.
Just a regular, yeah.
And then we can put a clarifying, this does not include any of the specified unpaid leaves, because there's civil error, there's ten other unpaid, so this could be. If leave does not qualify for one of the other specified requirements, regular leave.
Yeah, yeah, I got it.
Okay. So we are going to remove. I almost think two-nine, twelve should be the last leave category, so it should be moved to the end. So if you do not qualify for any of the above leaves.
This is what you get left.
You can't make it through one through thirty, you can.
Yeah.
Selenius bucket.
You gotta come up with a better imagination.
Yes.
It also appears, based on statute, that if they wanted to take the pregnancy and parenting leave, they could use their PTO for two weeks, then start the twelve weeks.
I, I, that's the way, I mean, if you want to, if you want to extend your leave by up to, up to twelve weeks, you have that block, let's say you're going to take the first four weeks vacation.
Then you're twelve.
Then you're twelve weeks, then you could potentially take a month at the end if you wanted to.
But I think the May allows them to get a paid.
It should, yeah, we should, I mean, I don't, we shouldn't force them to burn up their vacation inside of that, because.
We can't.
Yeah, we can't, I mean, after, because after twelve weeks, there's going to be follow-up visits, there's going to be sick kids, there's going to be time when they need that anyway.
Okay, so, two-nine, twelve, we'll remove the extra, we'll move it to the end, whatever number that will be once we're done with all of the details.
And so then the two-nine X's, the pregnancy and parenting leave and the adopted parenting.
Will all be renumbered, yeah. So adoptive parents, similar as parenting. Bone marrow.
So, on, on that thirty-six, that last, the leave must be for the purpose of arranging the child's placement or caring for the child after placement. So, what does that mean? Such leave must begin before child's placement, so you're saying if, if you're, if you're the one placing a child somewhere else, you get leave also?
I think this would be in the case of if you need to fly to a different state.
Or country.
Or country.
And you have to be there for a certain number of weeks while that, everything.
So the child is not in your care, but you are actively working.
So arranging, so you go to China to arrange, or go to another country and arrange for a child, that's part of it?
Yes.
Yes.
And then, once you get them home, caring for them?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, because it could be weeks before the child's in your care, but you're actively working towards that goal.
Yep, so I'm going to clarify.
Bone marrow and organ donation is paid, so that's a new one.
How much time do I get for a kidney?
If you ask James, not a month.
Not enough, no.
They're both gone, they both been banned.
Employees working an average of twenty or more hours per week may take paid leave, not to exceed forty hours.
This is just addition, this, one of the only paid leaves above and beyond anything else I've seen. The next one is light modified.
Back to the bone marrow, so, okay, yeah, per, it, it's, so requirement for cities with more than twenty employees. Refresh my memory, are our firefighters included in our employees? So we are over twenty, okay?
And it seems like sometimes it could be nineteen, sometimes it could be twenty-one, so I asked the league very specifically about Now Then, and they said if you're going to fluctuate, write your policy as twenty, because.
Okay, alright, so, employees working an average of twenty or more hours per week, but ours that work twenty hours don't get other than EST?
So my understanding is this is an exception, so even if you have a part-time employee who doesn't get PTO, they'll get these forty hours in addition to their ESST.
So if they're working twenty hours a week, they get their twenty hours, we're going to have to pay them forty hours?
No, no, they can take forty hours, which would be two weeks. Yeah, you don't, yes, correct, you don't have to pay them forty hours for the one week that they're.
I'm going to look in doctors, not saying that your kidney knocked out.
Yeah, I'm going to work on that.
The next is light duty, modified duty assignment. It's just saying that if you're unable to perform your essential requirements due to a temporary disability, you may modify your requirements for a timeframe.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
So, hang on a second, so the second to last paragraph, that city offers light duty assignment to an employee who is out on workers' compensation leave. The employee may be subject to penalties if they refuse such work. City will not, however, require an employee who is otherwise qualified for protection under FMLA to accept light duty. So you can offer light duty to somebody out on workers' comp.
So it sounds like.
Natalie?
Oh, I just wanted to know if you're all going to volunteer to cross-train, because if all these people are going to be gone, I won't be long.
Better bump it up to two-hundred and seventy hours.
Yeah.
Are, are you going to be, well, I'll save my comment for two sections down, no, I get it, just wait, keep going.
I would like to move this one closer to the parenting.
That's how I was just going to make a man, yeah.
It's out of order here, but accommodations for an employee, for health conditions relating to pregnancy. So this is similar, their duties may be modified depending on their health conditions.
Absolutely.
The last type of leave of absence we have is athletic.
This one's great, so don't even think about the twenty-twenty-eight Olympics.
Yeah.
Bob's sled, or skeleton.
Skeleton.
Jason's going to sign up for that one.
My daughter is trying to figure out what Olympic event she could sign up for.
Skeleton.
Because there are people that just like, look at some of the random stuff they have at the Olympics that are like.
Breakdancing doesn't seem like it's, the bar is too high, so.
Yep.
Well, not based on the last Olympics, it's not that high.
That's, that's what I'm saying, I'm pretty sure your daughter could make it in breakdancing.
I did have one of them look at it and say, you get paid to be in the Olympics, but you don't get paid to have a baby, that doesn't make sense.
Well, don't worry, Now Then doesn't pay for you to be the Olympics, but we let you to be, unpaid, go to the Olympics.
Shall be granted leave of absence without loss of pay for the purpose of preparing for us, that is paid.
That's how I read it.
That's how we read it.
Oh.
So go to the Olympics to get paid, but Natalie's point, have a baby, don't get paid.
So that, loss of pay, so.
Well, it does say, in no event shall the paid leave exceed ninety calendar days.
Is the loss of pay wording?
Absence would, shall be granted a leave of absence without loss of pay or other benefits.
So we could take, if they win the gold, we can take their prize money.
I can get a permanent medal in the office. So they can be off ninety days, ninety calendar days, and we pay them for the work days.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor, it is now eight-thirty-six, did you want to continue?
I do. Well, halfway through. Maybe we keep going and take a look at nine and see what we got.
Next item is on page thirty-nine. The, there's a section about Cobra, this is not mentioned in the league's policy. I do have a question out to them, asking how they recommend informing employees about Cobra benefits, since they don't have any verbiage. I also wanted to see what their verbiage is when they inform an employee, I'm still waiting to hear back from them. So, I have that as a strike through, it should really just be a comment, or a future clarification on Cobra. Because there are a lot of statutes mentioned in there as well, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Hello?
I had a note on that one, because our benefits administrator actually takes care of all of that for us. I would just have to call him up and say, this person left, and they'll take care of all the notifications and everything as far as the Cobra is concerned.
Yeah, I think we still have to notify them.
Yeah, I would recommend not taking that out, Cobra is going to be something that needs to be addressed.
So we leave it in for now?
Yes, I would recommend leaving it in, just when the league replies, the verbiage may be updated.
Whatever their updated verbiage is, you throw that back in?
Yes, but I would leave it in as it is right now, but update it if needed. The next is on page forty. Under professional organizations, professional organizations in the first paragraph was already in Now Then's policy. The second two were added per the league, so just clarifying, the professional organization must be related to the betterment of the services of the city, and when you leave service, the membership remains with the city and will be transferred to someone else. The next, again, professional development was already in the policy, only the highlighted section is added. The city will pay for the cost of participation, provided that attendance is approved in advance, under the following criteria. The next one is further down the page. Now Then's verbiage just said, these opportunities are subject to department head approval. The league has more specific requirements for reimbursement. It's not subjective, it's if you meet these requirements, they will pay for licenses, certifications, and coursework.
So just to, I mean, we're not saying we're going to pay for a four-year degree.
It does state in there, all requests for tuition reimbursement will be considered on a case-by-case basis by the administrator and final approval of city council to be the student's school, that's what you're talking about, is tuition reimbursement.
The next is on page forty-one, for travel expenses. Now Then previously had meal expenditures will be reimbursed according to the federal reimbursement rates for employees. The league has meal expenses up to X amount per day will be allowed.
I would prefer to keep it with the federal reimbursement, it's a standard amount based on the city that you travel to. The meals are more expensive here, if you go to Duluth or you go to St. Cloud, you know, it's based, that's what we always have, is the federal reimbursement.
So you recommend going back to what we had? Council, okay?
Debating, because that adds more time, they have to go look it up and see what is or isn't going to be reimbursed. And how often are the per diem rates changed by the GSA?
We just had a case where, there's a, small cities is having their annual conference, and normally the meals were fifteen dollars, but the city they picked, they're thirty to forty-eight dollars for an entree. And smaller towns actually are more expensive than the bigger cities right now.
So the Minnesota rate is eighty-six dollars a day for, for meals and incidentals, and a hundred and sixty-one a day for lodging, a hundred and fifty-three a day for lodging. And yeah, all depends from there, so.
Eighty-six a day?
Eighty-six dollars a day, based on the federalpay.org site that I'm looking at, for the twenty-twenty-five federal per diem rates.
Mr. Mayor?
But that's total day, I mean, that's.
Yeah, breakfast, lunch, and dinner.
Yeah.
And your hotel's a hundred and fifty?
A hundred and fifty-three.
Yeah, that's.
That's low.
The LMC conference is double that per night.
That's fine, I.
That's for twenty-five, for twenty-four is seventy-four dollars a day, and a hundred and fifty dollars, but, yeah.
So leave meals as federal reimbursement, but not add that to lodging?
I would just, just leave the yellow, or the red out, that's fine, and just come up with a, meal expenses.
Oh, so.
Thirty-five bucks. I mean, thirty-five.
Per meal.
Per meal.
Oh, okay, well, this is per day.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're got to per.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying thirty-five bucks a meal, and to be totally honest, I couldn't care less if you have a beer with your dinner or not.
Heads is liability, most don't, because a liability.
But you can have the beer, you just can't get, have the city pay you back for it.
Oh yeah, you can have the beer.
Mr. Mayor? Genevieve, the paragraph right before lodging, and then it talks about seventy-five mile radius, is that the recommendation of leave? Or is that just our policy that we had there for the seventy-five miles?
That's Now Then's policy, we discussed that.
Because I thought we, yeah, I thought we talked about that too, and that we. Maybe that's something we should bring back then.
I thought we said.
Because if I sent someone to St. Cloud, they may not make it, or when we went down to the clerks conference in Minneapolis, that wasn't, but we, we did stay overnight down there for a multitude of different reasons, but it didn't meet the seventy-five mile radius, so.
Well, also says unless it's determined to be financially feasible and approved by the council prior to travel, so we can change it, so.
I was just thinking, because I think remember when Shanny went down, and it took her two and a half hours or whatever to get home, and
Yeah.
she would have been better off to probably stay down there because of the weather. I thought that we had a discussion about that, and just said to use discretion.
Oh, we do have it, the catch-all, determined financially feasible, approved by the council.
Because I always used to do the north, I used to always go to the St. Cloud stuff, because for me to get to Bloomington from here in the winter, it was faster to go up to St. Cloud.
Thanks, Genevieve, I was just wondering if that was from the league or if that was just us here?
No, we haven't made any changes to that, that was just already in the policy. So for meals, federal reimbursement or dollar cap?
Let's do a dollar.
What dollar amount would be that?
Thirty-five bucks.
Per meal?
How much?
Up to thirty-five dollars per meal.
What if I want a Starbucks in the middle of the day? Is that a meal?
But you're only going to get
Add it to your meal.
That's breakfast.
If you had a twenty-five dollar meal and ten dollars Starbucks, you stayed on any of the thirty-five.
Thirty-five per
Or that's a miscellaneous reimbursement.
So, so, okay, so one of the
So, so you say thirty-five a meal. Dinner's going to be, could be twice that.
Dinner's easier. It's going to be thirty-five bucks.
Yeah, I spent thirty-five for breakfast yesterday at Northwest.
And thirty-five, yeah, you stay at the hotel and eat the breakfast.
The twenty-twenty-five general rate is sixty-eight bucks per day.
The, the thing about doing the federal reimbursement is then you don't have to do, you don't have to provide your, your statements, your billing. So, if you only do a twelve-dollar lunch, you only get paid a twelve-dollar lunch on, on, if, you know, if, if you go there, you're just going to get what they tell you you're going to get for the day.
Oh, so you don't have to provide receipts. You just get eighty-six dollars.
That means something completely different.
I, well, I'm, what I'm saying is that if, if you do that, we didn't have to do receipts.
No.
But they, when we, when I was doing our travel.
When you did it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, right, and so, and then if you didn't, if you, if your flight didn't get in till, and we had to change it because they may just start to go to flights earlier. If your flight didn't leave by a certain time, you didn't get a breakfast. And so, I think it's better to go up per meal price, because if you're getting up and you're driving to someplace and you've got to do a breakfast on the road or whatever, so.
But you can still do sixty-eight dollars a day and you have to turn in your receipts whether you get it or not. And that can be used as a benchmark. And it's not, you don't get a stipend of sixty-eight dollars to spend on meals, whether you go to the grocery store and buy a box of Cheerios for breakfast, which is twenty dollars. I'm kidding. Or have a
Or you're getting a small box.
Right.
So, sorry.
So, so, what'd you say, sixty-eight?
National general rate is sixty-eight dollars a day for meals.
And you still have to turn in your receipts.
And you'd still have to turn in your receipts.
So, you're reimbursed up to that much. Eat breakfast at the hotel, Starbucks for lunch, and get a nice dinner.
That's what I did.
All right.
So, I don't know. Okay, yeah, so we, there is a blanket statement at the end that says original receipts. And I would assume that covers the entire section above. Food, lodging, taxis, parking, et cetera.
That's not there is like if you end up taking it and go to the airport. Just taxis, subways, bus fares are miscellaneous reimbursements. Oh, they're miscellaneous. Okay, all right.
We could, we could add Ubers just to clarify.
That's taxes.
So, do we want to, do you want to say the
The twenty-twenty-five workforce doesn't know what a taxi is.
Hey, that's true.
I'm not kidding. They probably don't know what a taxi is. Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
So, the, what was the decision on the verbiage? Dan, were you, were you saying the federal reimbursement was sixty-eight? What, what were you quoting?
I was quoting the average from looking up the federal reimbursement of sixty-eight dollars a day.
So, I think if you keep, if you keep that verbiage in there, we don't have to change it every time.
So, you could, you could do up to the federal reimbursement cap so that you still need receipts. You're not just giving people eighty-six dollars per day without receipts. But then you would have them determine what the cap is.
But that was your eighty-six dollars though, Dan.
Eighty-six or sixty-eight?
Eighty-six is Minnesota, sixty-eight is general, but yeah.
Do eighty-six.
You're going to be in, you're going to be in Minnesota mainly, so it would be the Minnesota.
You get eighty-six bucks a day.
But I think you don't want to put a number in there. You put the Minnesota or put the federal, because that's going to change every year. If we put a number in there in three years, it's going to be outdated.
So, so
You put the Minnesota federal per diem rate.
Yeah.
Yes.
Up to.
Up to.
It's Minnes, wait, Minnesota Fedra?
Yes. The federal per diem rate lists out every state. And then they have a general one, but the general one seems really low.
But it's the Minnesota per diem rate.
Minnesota per diem is eighty-six.
On the federal chart.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I hate to be the devil's advocate here, but what if they go to Wisconsin or something?
You only get eighty.
So, should we leave Minnesota out?
Bring back cheese curds you're giving.
So, we're just, you're going to use the Minnesota rate?
Minnesota rate, I mean, I would think that's
Perfect. I, I'm just devil's advocate.
Mr. Mayor?
It's nine o'clock. I'm getting lunch.
So, if we're going to say this, that does or does not apply to lodging?
Eighty-six does not apply to lodging.
No, the federal reimbursement.
No, it's just out of non-luxury hotels.
I just wanted to make sure that the lodging was still going to be covered.
It's just the same, as what's there, yeah.
And then there's a, there's a federal on lodging as well.
There is.
There is, but we're not doing
We're just saying don't pick the luxury place.
No, usually the conferences tell you where you're going.
Yeah.
Correct.
They give you choice hotels.
Unless it's
Rochester.
Occasional event. It says right in there. Unless it's
And we're asking for preapproval from the council before we go to those.
Right. Or they are, or they're, I'm just thinking
Where they are, yeah.
Conferences, yeah.
So, let's take the case of Shani. We're, we're currently saying unless it's determined to be financially feasible and approved by the city council prior to travel. So, then we just need to make sure that when we talk about getting approvals, that if the weather's terrible, it's okay to get a hotel, so you're not driving for three hours to come home.
Beg your forgiveness.
And, and, and with the request, the reimbursement request going to council, that certainly can be discussed at that point.
That's fine. After the fact, right?
Yeah.
So, then the prior to travel meets?
Where, where possible. Prior to travel where possible. So, then if you get caught in a snowstorm, you've been in, in the conference all day and you come out and there's a blizzard raging. Or an ice storm around.
Well, Mr. Mayor, when we're doing those conferences, a lot of times you get the discount if you book your room. But a lot of times you can still cancel them up to the day before or the night before. And then you could do it dependent upon weather. But I don't know that you necessarily want to leave it up until the day of and then say, oh, now you got to find a hotel. Because the rooms may be
Probably full.
Either full because the conferences are full. I just think you need to think about that a little bit while we're talking about it.
So, the other, so back under rental car, again, I research me transportation and stuff for six hundred people. Rental cars should be mid-size unless pre-approved. So, I had officers that couldn't get into a mid-size, so. So, I'm just glad that we have that pre-approved, so that.
All right, last one in this section. The last sentence says in order to receive reimbursement, employee must complete the appropriate claim form, attach receipts, and submit to finance department for consideration and approval. My understanding is they're not, is not currently a claim form. So, what should the reimbursement process be updated to?
Genevieve, there is.
Yeah.
We do have one.
Okay.
And finance department needs to be changed again, too, please?
That is an update. All right. The next is on that same page under conduct.
Mr. Mayor, it's nine o'clock. This is a big section. I'd say this is a good stopping point.
All right. All right, I'll call it then.
Mr. Mayor?
Come from Ringo.
This is the RCA that was submitted by the city administrator. I would move that we approve the request for council action, which is a staff recommendation and to ensure we don't get ourselves into a situation where we run out of time to end the project manager's employment with the city, that it would be, last day would be Friday, October twenty-fifth.
Second. A motion, second. Any further discussion? Mr. Mayor, Councilman Brian.
So, then we'll just wrap up whatever we have by Friday with the changes that we, we issued tonight. Basically, my understanding.
This is the first I'm hearing of it. So, previously, my last day was November second, so I don't know if I'll have time to wrap up everything by the twenty-fifth, if that's the new date.
Yeah, we don't care, sorry. I don't, I don't understand. We've never done this before. Like, again, I don't want to be seen as lobbying for somebody that I'm related to, so. If, if this makes sense to the council, I mean, I don't understand the extra week to wrap things up, because you need that person to wrap things up. So, what are you wrapping up? The employment ends, it, it ends, and I'm not sure what else you have to wrap up.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
So, the reason why this is brought up, it's no different than when she, when we had the project manager, that the requirement is thirty days and we did thirty-five days to make sure that we don't overlap. The comment was made about November second. The project manager was able to come back on May.
I think the council's made up their minds, Scott, so. You made a request. The council has made up their minds.
I just wanted to explain.
And, yeah, I, I understand that it, the, I, I guess the consideration that nobody reached out to the project manager and say, what do you need to do? We canceled September. You know, this is supposedly one of the most important things we've got to do, and we've canceled repeatedly. And we had this, this all set up, and we had another month and a half to go to finish it. And, and, and we canceled that, or it was canceled. And, and as Genevieve's saying, this is the first she's hearing about it. And I don't know what your plans were for the rest of the week, but we've got to wrap up everything in, in a few days here to make sure we get a good handoff. But if that's what the council wants to do, I'm not going to make a big deal out of it. I just, I, I think it's, it's poor planning. We've had probably an opportunity to get this done, and, and now we'll just pick up with somebody new later, so.
Just so, I understand, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
From what I heard said, my last day will be this Friday. So, I would say my last day would be tonight, and I will just turn in my equipment after the meeting tonight. As I stated previously, my, it had already been decided that the last day would be November first, which is a hundred and eighty days from when I came back. So, that was what I had been planning on, is wrapping up everything, getting the formatting ready, typing up the notes from tonight, and making any changes per today's discussion. But if the last day will be Friday, then per my schedule, I won't have time to drive back up to Now Then and turn in my laptop by Friday.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Scott.
I understand that the project manager that Genevieve was talking about the first, but we, in the, in the resolution that was approved when she came back for phase two, her final day was October thirtieth. So, really what I'm doing is changing it by three days, having, trying to get everything. I asked for it to be formatted, because we've been talking about getting it formatted and trying to get tonight's updates in there by Friday to turn in the equipment. We're really talking about three days. She was due to come back a hundred and eighty, we, as a hundred and eighty days, we don't really have wiggle room with that. A hundred and eighty days is a hundred and eighty days from May third, okay? She didn't start till the sixth, but she was able to come back after thirty-five days on that Friday, the third, made the determination she was going to start on Monday, the sixth. Hundred and eighty days from the sixth would be the date she's talking about. But in the resolution that I looked at, a hundred and eighty days was October thirtieth. So, we're talking about three days.
Okay, and, and, and again, I don't want to make this a bigger deal than it needs to be. But, and you can, you know, crumble all you want. If you knew that, it just seemed professional to say, oh, by the way, we want you to format all this. We want you to do all this, but your last day's Friday, so you need to do that all. And to not have any proactive communication and say, here's what we're thinking. Here's when we're going to, you wrote an RCA, so there's some thought put into it that if this was the deadline you wanted, it just would have seemed to be more professionally proactive to communicate to the person that you're asking to format everything and do this all and see what their schedule was to see if this was a reasonable thing. But, that being said
Mr. Mayor, may I speak?
Yes.
I have to say I'm very disappointed that this is how I'm hearing about this and the first that I'm hearing about this, because I would have loved to have this formatted, but I had no idea that that was the plan. I did start proactively formatting it, so there is a small section that is done. But I, I am very, I'm very sad, because I wanted to do a great job on this project and, and now I feel like I don't have the opportunity to finish what I started and what I was hired to do. And so, that is very disappointing, and, and I am sorry to the council that you will not get my quality work because of what I feel like is, is a little bit of a bombshell. And I really, really wish I would have had advanced notice of this. And so, I do want to state, I apologize, that the work that you are going to be getting from me is not polished, because I know to you it might be three business days. But what work I can do in three business days is the polishing work that needed to be done to end in a quality product.
We have a motion in a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Brian.
So, if, if, if your last day is the thirtieth, Genevieve, would the changes that we've done tonight be incorporated into the documents?
Yes.
And what about the formatting?
Yes.
Seems like a reasonable investment to me, but if we're going to pay somebody a couple hundred dollars an hour to do this, what we're paying thirty-five dollars an hour for now, we can make that decision too.
Someone's
I'd support that, Dan.
What's that?
I'd, I mean, if it's three more days, it's like we didn't get through the whole thing and it's not, it's because we've delayed this thing. So, it's, let's get it to a point where we can wrap it up if that takes three more days. We, give it three days and be done. Let's get it to a good stopping point and move from there. Does that make sense, Mayor?
So, so, Genevieve, just to confirm that you could have all of that done by the thirtieth?
With the information as of tonight's date, yes.
So, I really would have to be prepped for the same day then? We got no buffer?
That'd give us enough time not to go over
Well, the, the actual
Yeah, I'm asking Mr. Mayor, the city administrator. So, our initial, our original date, based on when the resolution was passed, was the end date of October thirtieth.
Correct.
So.
And you have until November first. So, the thirtieth gives you a three-day buffer.
What do you mean you have? What do you mean by that?
I came back on May sixth, and so a hundred and eighty days from
But you chose to come back on May sixth. You were due back on the third. That's what the resolution, that's why the resolution stated the third, and then you came back the following Monday, the sixth, so the resolution
My start, it goes from the start date that I came back.
Which was the third on the resolution, which the council approved.
But for purposes of para, which is the point of this, is to avoid para.
May third is Friday. You're counting Saturday and Sunday, obviously. But I, I think the agreement was the sixth.
Okay, so, let's move forward here.
It was stated the third. That's what I just said.
Okay.
So, do we, having a
So, Mayor, do you want to amend your motion?
No, I will pull my motion.
Okay. And so, we have a motion. And so we have a motion to continue through the thirtieth, and to to make the changes we agreed to tonight in the formatting uh to this point. Do we have a motion to that effect?
So moving. I'm second that.
And we have a motion in a second, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, if they're signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, closed?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And then, Mr. Mayor, what I would like to do is provide a policy of everything that has been approved to date in one draft policy, and then a separate document of all remaining items that had, did not get a chance to be discussed, so that they are very clear and it is very, um, it is laid out what did not get to be discussed yet.
And does that include the the subpolicies like technology and?
They will be listed out on there, yes. Anything that did not receive council approval will be listed out on the separate document.
All right, Mr. Mayor?
Scott. Is that to include the formatting also, and then when is the equipment gonna be turned in, city, city property gonna be turned in, if she's worked until the thirtieth?
The city property will be turned in on the thirtieth.
Second, Mayor Jeremy.
We need tape, we need like six single, don't, no way.